The regular council meeting to order for January 27th at 3:00 P. M.
Good afternoon. Please note that council meetings are streamed live and recorded on YouTube. Attendees acknowledge that in accordance with Section 17-2 of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, names, addresses, and other details provided when speaking at a council meeting will be publicly shared. Should you have any questions related to the collection or disclosure of personal information, please contact the Legislative and Advisory Services Division for the Town of High River by sending an email to FOIP@highriver.ca.
Thanks, Jody. Adoption of the agenda, I'll ask for a motion from Councillor Jones that council adopt the agenda for this regular council meeting, January 27th, as presented.
I'll give you that motion, Mayor Snodgrass.
All in favor? Carried. Adoption of previous minutes. Ask for a motion from Councillor Nychuk that council adopts a January 13th, 2025, regular council meeting minutes as presented.
I'll give you that motion, Mr. Mayor.
All in favor? Carried. Two delegations today. The first one is from the Royal Canadian Legion in the High River regarding veterans crosswalk, and I know we've got Rick Green and Auntie Linda's here. And yeah, I get to call you that. That'd be fully transparent, right?
Good afternoon. I'm really happy that Linda was able to make it, now knowing that she's Auntie Linda. We don't really have a technical presentation, other than what was put in your package. Basically, what we're looking for is permission. As I understand, the decorative crosswalks have to go through council for final approval, and that's what we're asking for. We're asking for approval to put down a veterans' crosswalk at the corner of Centre Street and Veterans Way. No cost to the town. I will be covering the costs. We've looked at a number of different successes and failures in putting down a crosswalk that will maintain color. Ours is basically white and red. Every other stripe will be red, and at the end, there'll be a soldier and a statement saying "Lest We Forget" at each end of the crosswalk. Attached, I've provided a map with the location and photo of our anticipated design. I've been out to the Cochrane Crosswalk, which was probably the one that looked the best out of all the media that I looked at, and they too seem to be having, just from last week, a little bit of fading happening already with their crosswalk. So I wanted to make sure that we do it without too much fading, and that there's funds there for annual maintenance if required. Some of the ones I've looked at are also, they're saying anywhere from two years to 10 years, depending on the type of coding. And I believe Pride shared that with you at the last council or the council before. We'll still be looking down that road. We expect it'll be anywhere between $2,500 and $10,000. And we're prepared for that. We don't need town money for that. So all we're basically looking for is approval for the site, and then final approval on the design, if you so wish. Once it's put in place, the Legions wants to put on a bit of a community grand opening of the walk, and we're hoping to have that done in July, June or July, once the streets have been cleaned and the temperature comes up. Because curing, from what I understand, requires a temperature of nearly 80 degrees. And with that, we'll open it up to questions.
Sounds good. Thanks, Rick. So you need our blessing on the crosswalk, which is easy. Do you also need town support with the road closure and stuff?
We will need that, and we'll be asking even some assistance from town operations on the right paint to use. I'm assuming that they're better at it than I am.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Councillor Kinghorn?
Thanks, Mayor Snodgrass. Thanks for bringing this forward, Mr. Green. I think this is a great project, and I'm really looking forward to you guys getting this done. My only concern is I did a little bit of research on this, and there was some, I did a little bit of research on this, and there were some negative comments about a sidewalk and people driving over it and that sort of thing. You being here tells me you're not concerned.
I'm not concerned because we're going to have a soldier at each end of that sidewalk.
Okay. With a big gun, right?
With a gun.
No, that was the only thing I read about it that had any sort of negative to us at all, and I think it was just some disgruntled people perhaps. But really, thank you for doing this. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councillor Jones?
Thank you, Mayor Snodgrass, and thank you. Yeah, I like the design. Do you guys have any concerns about regular maintenance on it? That's the only thing, is it fades and driving over it and stuff. But the regular maintenance of the sidewalk would be your responsibility, and you're okay with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion from Councillor Kinghorn that council allows or authorizes the Royal Canadian Legion Branch 71 to place a decorative crosswalk at the intersection of Centre Street and Veterans Way, and to also lend support through our Operations Department with road closures as necessary.
Thank you, Mayor Snodgrass. You have my motion, and I, great job. Thank you.
All in favor? All good?
Thank you.
Carry on.
Bye, Craig.
See Auntie Linda. Hiwood Curling Club, Kate and Pat are here.
Do you want the higher chair?
Yeah. Do you want me to go over here? Good afternoon, Mayor Snodgrass and council, and thank you for your time and attention in this matter for us. My name is Kate Rens, and Pat Peslawski has joined me. We are members of the Board of the Hiwood Curling Club. We are looking today for financial assistance of a donation of $2,000 to cover expenses that we will incur for supporting, for hosting, I should say, a provincial championship in our club. As you know, Hiwood Curling Club has been around for years, and a lot of our members have been around for years as well. It gives them an opportunity to come and socialize with other members, as well as get them out of the house, of their house. Some of them stay at home all day long, so it's an excuse and a reason to go and enjoy something that they have a common interest in. Prior to COVID, we had 266 members. After COVID, when COVID came, we actually lost quite a few members, and the year following, we had the floor removed. From the Curling Club, we lost several more. Membership dropped, and in September 2024, we had 103 members. After a major advertising campaign that took place July to September, we were quite happy with our results. We ended up with 177 members. So it was a lot of work, but curling has not died off in High River. Curling is growing. We have a new junior league, which has 21 members from age seven to 14, 15 years old, and we've added to our evening leagues, as well as our seniors. We have recently been approached from Curling Alberta with the opportunity to host a provincial championship stick curling event. It's very popular in curling now because people don't have to go to the traditional hack, and a lot of seniors find it much easier on their bodies and their bones, allows them to curl and stir a lot longer in their lifetime. As well, it's great for mobility people and for people in wheelchairs, that type of thing. Anyone and any age can do it. We have two gentlemen, Lloyd Frostat, who is 96 years old, and Jack Penny, who is 97 years old. They stirled, they used a push stick, a delivery stick, and they've just actually retired last March from our league. They still show up to watch curling and sterling, and I'm sure they wish they were out there. Kay Wild is another little lady that turned 90 in November, and she is also a delivery stick user. We have asked her to represent our Hiwood Curling Club at the opening ceremonies, so she will be delivering the ceremonial rock. Alberta has approximately 37% of all of the stick curlers in Canada, so we've got quite a significant number. And it's great that we'll be able to host this event. There are 183 teams, curling club teams or curling clubs across Alberta. We're not 100% sure how many participants will be involved in this competition, but we do see potential for increased revenue in our restaurants, in our hotels, and the exposure that our little town will bring to us. The funds that we're asking for will cover our three days of ice rental, as well as the lounge, and we are also wanting to cover the registration fee for our team, as well as other hosting expenditures that we'll incur. We want this to be a fantastic opportunity and just a fantastic, successful event. And that is pretty much all I have to say, other than we invite you all to come and watch curling, February 21st to 23rd, which is the dates of the event. We don't have times yet. They have been, they will be scheduled, and we will put the times out. But you'll see some great curling. So thank you for listening, and we'll open it to any questions.
Thanks, Kate. We'll just start going through the list here. Councillor Jones?
Thank you, Mayor Snodgrass, and thank you for your presentation. I do have a question about the amount you are asking for, because in the letter it says $2,000, and in your delegation it says 2,500. I'm just wondering what-
I apologize. That's 2,000.
Thank you.
Question on accessing these funds. Has this gone and been requested through SEVAC at all, or how would, can anybody?
No.
It hasn't. Should it?
When I read through this, I thought of that as well. Our meeting is tomorrow, and at that amount, it could definitely go in front of SEVAC tomorrow if there was a presentation to be given to them. And Jocelyn, I have reached out to her, would be on board for looking into that as well.
If it's tomorrow, can we use their same presentation they've given us today?
I believe so. The only thing that the SEVAC presentation would require, when I look at it, would be a little more detail on what the funds would be used for, like a breakdown of cost. Does that make sense?
Yep. Because when's this taking place?
It's the 21st to the 23rd of February, Mayor. The thing is, we actually didn't find out about this very long ago. This event was initially scheduled to go to Didsbury, but Didsbury had some issues with their ventilation system or something, and they actually closed the Didsbury Curling Club for the year, for the season. So they've been scrambling, and then we've been scrambling, so we're trying to get this-
Yeah, no, that's fair. We'll make it, we'll make it work one way or the other. Chris, Jody, guidance on what direction this should go? Should it go through SEVAC first to be, to kind of follow funding procedures, or?
I'm just pulling it up because I do recall when the request came in, we thought that it didn't fit under SEVAC. So that's why it ended up here. But I'm just pulling up the policy once again to confirm how we got to that conclusion. I don't know if, Chris, you have anything you want to add, or?
Yeah, reviewing the policy, I think there's potential, because we did amend the policy to allow for-profit endeavors as well. And this is still a not-for-profit society that's hosting an event, even though it's gathering registrations. There is nothing within the procedure that restricts gathering registrations from that perspective for hosting an event. So that's within the procedure aspect of things. So I think it could qualify to go to SEVAC, unless somebody can clarify for me that it cannot.
Go ahead, Councillor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is it the volunteer component that's the sticking point for SEVAC? Possibly. And just, do you know what SEVAC is?
No, actually, we were going about to answer that question. Thank you.
It's the Community Vitality Fund, and so it's monies that we set aside for events and other happenings for nonprofits and other social groups to come and ask for this very thing. So I think if there's, if I correct me if I'm not explaining it properly, but I think that there's a volunteer component required, and obviously, you're all volunteer board members, and volunteer members of the Curling Club would probably be lending their time. Is that correct?
We have, actually, we, the little glitch in this whole thing is I'm not going to be here for this event. So we have gotten together with Pat and several others of the board, and we've spread the word around. We actually have about 27 people that have stepped up to the plates, and we have a whole-
As volunteers.
As volunteers, and we have a whole kind of selection of what their job duties will be and that type of thing. So volunteers, we have lots.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Jones?
Thanks, Mayor Snodgrass. I think one of the sticking points might be on how the Curling Club leases or rents the facility, was one of the questions that was asked to me. So the town could, for instance, waive that fee, because it's one of the things that they are asking for, instead of going to SEVAC. But that's the only thing I can think of. That could be a potential, not issue, but a point of, that we could use.
That's a fantastic point, and it's just what I pulled up here, is that in the past, when we've asked for, and I guess it depends on the logistics of how you handle it, if you're looking to waive the rental fee, that's something that only council can waive a fee. If you're looking to donate the 2,000, then yes, that's something that could go through SEVAC. So thank you. I was trying to figure out, I should have written down why we brought it to council, instead of just made the decision on the fly.
I'm just thinking, to keep it clean and following our processes, I do think this should go through SEVAC first. And then if SEVAC has an issue with it, well, then it can come back here. Like, I'm not saying, there's a way to get it done. I'm just, I want to make sure we're following normal procedures with these things. Councillor Kinghorn?
Yeah, I have to concur with you, Mayor Snodgrass, and, you know, SEVAC has come to us a few times now, looking for projects similar to this. So I think that that is the right place for it to go, and if something happens at SEVAC that it doesn't quite work out, we've still got time to have a look at the rental fees and come back to us and waive the fees if we have to, or something like that. But thank you for bringing it to High River. This is another, one of those things that High River does well. We have people come to town, and we have big celebrations like this one, so I'm excited to see it. I might even try it once.
Absolutely. Anyone can do at any age. No. Is there anything further that we are to do then with this SEVAC, or?
So here's what we'll do, Kate. Jocelyn is here in the office. Jody's just going to send her a message to come and meet you guys out in the lobby to explain, like, for me, we've got, there's a lot of information here that we can get to SEVAC before the meeting tomorrow night, and, but Jocelyn will help you just kind of connect those dots, so that we do this properly. Is that fair?
Absolutely.
But, Pat?
Does that, yes, does that require us to come back?
We will find out.
Okay, you can let us-
One step at a time, but.
And it's fine. We're available.
Yeah, for sure.
Until Monday morning at 6:00 A. M. And I'm out of here.
She's going on vacation.
Sorry, Councillor Barton and Councillor Nychuk, before we end this. Yep?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for bringing this to town, or accepting it, right? I think that's an important step forward, and it's, I think it's going to help grow and reflect your membership numbers as well, right? The one thing that I read in your little note, your letter here, that made me think of not only your event, but other events, and I don't know what mechanism we have in place within the town, is how do we, there's a, it says, this has the potential of bringing a substantial number of people into our town, increase hotel revenue, increase restaurant revenue, all that kind of stuff. Is there a way that we can track that, or we can ask? Or is that something that we put on to the groups, that whether it's a hockey tournament, or it's a, just so that we can see some of the upside of things, right? It doesn't have to be detailed.
Typically, if it's a SEVAC application, they do have to report back on what the benefit to the community is, and how is added vitality, and what the economic benefit to the community may have been. And we do that also for the film industry, too. They have to submit a report upon completion. Other events that are not funded through those kind of programs or those policies, we don't necessarily push them into kind of counting them by hotel rooms. But I do know that a lot of tournaments, sporting tournaments in particular, use a standardized calculation on how much revenue they actually generate for their tournaments, and they use that as a business case when presenting to municipalities.
Okay. Thanks, Chris. Councillor Nychuk?
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks for your delegation and presentation. This is just more for, I guess, clarification for the one or two people that might be online, or I don't recognize any new faces in the audience. But just for the people that don't have an understanding, and for SEVAC, that is, we're not trying to make you jump through hoops to come here and present to us, and then we're going to send you to SEVAC. SEVAC was created for the purpose of this, so that these small asks that came to council for whatever, $1,000, $2,000, $5,000, there was a funding method and a way for that funding to go to the community. So I just want you folks to know, we're not trying to make this difficult for you. Clearly, there's a misstep in, you know, being communicated to you to where maybe the best place to present was, but just for general speaking to anybody listening, SEVAC is there for this purpose. We're definitely not telling you to go somewhere else to find the funding. It's just we're taking you to the right way that we've established over the last number of years to come up with this, to support groups in the community. So all the best with your event.
Thank you very much for the clarification. Thank you.
So we got Jocelyn? Jocelyn's available, so she'll meet you out-
All right.
In the lobby.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We're going to miss you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Where are we at with the aquatics expansion change? Kaylee?
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. This afternoon, I am here to discuss some changes that have taken place on the aquatics project. It's a design scope change. As you recall, this project was awarded back and started in July of 2024. During excavation, we had determined that there were some changes in our water table in the area. Through reviewing of the Geotech Report that had been completed prior to the project, evaluating the current ground conditions, and then evaluating some of our own data we collect as municipality, a new design has been created that would address any water table changes that have taken place since the geotechnical report was completed. With those changes, it has been broken out in a couple ways. So in order to keep the project proceeding, so that we could keep construction moving, deal with the water that had been found, the water table changes that have been found, deal with them, and keeping the construction moving, we issued what's called a change directive. The change directive allows those works to continue. So what we've done is, in coordination with our consultants team and our contractors, we've broken the change directive out into three components, so we can really evaluate it and validate it as we complete each individual step. So there's three components, one being any measures that have taken place up to date to keep construction moving. That's item one. Item two, which we're discussing today, is what the actual design scope change is, and we've had some estimations done on it, so we have an estimated value. And then three is going to be, if there's going to be a delay, what the delay would be, and what the cost of that delay will be. Today, we're here to discuss item number two, which is the actual design scope change and the value that we have estimated for it at this point in time. So to date, we have change orders up to 217,000 and change. The estimated value of this scope change, and this would be to upgrade or change the scope of the weeping tile design, along with putting a temporary measure in place that's a little bit more robust than what we have right now. We've been just kind of moving it around and mitigating as we go. We'll put a temporary solution in place. That total comes to about $360,000 and change. So kind of as we had discussed when we had awarded the project, any really large changes that was going to come to play, we wanted to make sure we were keeping council in the loop, in the know and in the conversation. So anything over that $100,000 mark. So that's why we're here today, is to discuss this component, because it is a larger scope change, and we want to make sure that- this component, because it is a larger scope change, and we want to make sure that everyone is comfortable. The design team, along with our consultant group, the town and the contractor, have all been sitting down and diligently going through these numbers to make sure that we understand the true scope change, the true value of each of the items. So there has been that thorough review. And today's kind of that final step is to bring to council that information, so that you are able to see what we're kind of working through. So with that, I'll open up the floor to any questions.
And just to clarify, Kaylee, the old, the existing pool site had sump pumps, et cetera, throughout it to keep-
That is correct. So there was, there is already an existing sump pump in the existing facility, and you'll actually, there are many businesses and residents in town that have sump pumps in their buildings. So sump pumps aren't a new design or a bad thing. They are just a standard form of practice depending on the geotechnical conditions of where you're building. So it's not uncommon for houses and commercial buildings to have sump pumps in them. We had a sump pump in the expansion because we were building on the same site. The only thing that has changed is that the groundwater table itself has had some significant changes. And so we're simply updating or upgrading the system that was already designed to be within that facility in the expansion.
Right. Better to know this now than after the fact of trying to fix it, fix it after construction, right?
Absolutely, for sure.
So that's the important thing on these, on these large-scale construction projects is when, you know, what have we got, two point four million in contingency?
That's correct.
Right? That's what it's for, is to make sure that we've got money available so that when there are these little instances that come up through construction, that you've got the funds available to put the correct fix in for it. And that's what, that's what this is for today. So any other questions from, from council? Counselor Nychuck?
Thanks, Mayor Snodgrass. With the upgrade to the weeping tile and pump system, is there a tolerance over and above of the increase that we're seeing now? Meaning, so we had something put in for what we thought or calculated was, was the requirement. Now we have an increase to that inflow of water. Is there also a buffer in there in case we get more?
Yeah. So because we are in a situation where we want to keep construction moving along, we don't want to wait for all absolutes to come in, what we got is we got a bunch of estimates, and we throw some contingency on top of that in order to kind of buffer us. And so then, as they are able to get, whether it be materials order or contractors lined up and contracts signed, then we'll have some absolute knowns there. So we are working with this dollar value in that hopefully we can narrow it down a little bit and not be spending that much. We want to make sure we have a contingency within that dollar value, though, to ensure that we're getting this done, because we can't get all the absolutes in without delaying the project.
Okay, I want to clarify, it's not on the dollar spend, it's on the amount of water. So my sump at home in my residence sometimes is crazy active in a year and sometimes it is like dead dry. So we've seen an increase in the volume of water that's at this location.
That is correct.
So it, it could dry up some more, and what we're putting in might not be of use, but it could also possibly increase. So with what we're putting in, this upgrade, this change to handle more water, is there a little bit of buffer in there if the water was to also increase? Is that-
That is correct.
So not the dollars, it's the water in the system, we're putting it in, what it will handle?
Absolutely. So in this case, yes, there's always a tolerance built in to make sure that if we know what today's conditions are, if we were to have a shift, we have that safety or that buffer in place. And that's quite often a standard practice with any sump pumps.
I assumed so, but I wanted to be proactive-
Absolutely.
-so that the public understood we are prepared and we're looking at everything very holistically. So thank you.
Yeah, and we had a little bit of extra data that we wouldn't typically have. So we had the geotech report, which is always kind of a, we want to do, but it's a best guess, because you can, you aren't gonna know until you actually excavate your ground. You're never gonna know your actual conditions until you excavate. We then had them evaluate the water that was on site. But additionally, the town does what's called level loggers. And so we have these boreholes throughout town. And so we were able to, we managed to get some level loggers, we replaced them and had them back in the ground for this year. And we were able to actually collect that data and compare it back to previous years, like twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen. And we were able to clearly see that there was a change as well through our level lockers. So it wasn't just in this one particular site condition, we were able to see it across the table. You're welcome.
Counselor Walsh?
Thank you. My question is about money. I'd like to know where we're in in the use of the contingency. This is a notable change order. There's a long list of other things. So where are we at in contingency?
Yeah, so to date, we have with our two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars and change for change orders. We also have this three sixty and change. So that brings us just under six hundred thousand dollars for these particular items. With that said, we obviously have two more numbers coming in. That'd be to-date numbers and our potential schedule change. We haven't finished validating those numbers.
Pardon me?
We are still waiting for information to come in to ensure that we are confident in the numbers that are being provided to us. So they will be in those over hundred thousand dollars. So we will be coming to council to actually go through and discuss in detail what those actually are, both the spent to date and the schedule change.
So we're awaiting a further report to confirm how much of the contingency has been absorbed? Is that correct?
That is correct. We are still waiting and validating all the information that's been brought into us.
When might we see that?
My goal is to have it in the next meeting, which is the first February meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, no further questions. I will ask for a motion from Counselor Walsh that council direct administration to proceed with the new weeping tile system and some, and some scope as designed through change directive zero, zero, one, estimated at three hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty cents.
I'll give you that motion.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? You're opposed?
Pardon me?
You're opposed? You're in favor? Okay. Gary, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kaylee. Okay. Counselor reports. Counselor Smith, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a little statement for everybody today. Maybe not so little, but you bear with me. In the fall of two thousand and twenty-one, the world was creeping out of COVID, and I, like many, had faced a complete shutdown of my industry through the pandemic. And the gift that followed was having to reset and start again. The decision was to pursue the opportunity to represent our community in a municipal governance role. With the support of several serving council members at the time and my family, I threw my hat in the ring. To my delight, our community put their faith in me to take on the role of counselor. There have been some fabulous moments as a member of this council, and there have been many learning moments as well. No one can prepare you for how to process the variety of opinions you experience, particularly through social media, and no one can prepare you for the highs and lows that come with putting your name and self out into the community in the way that being a member of council asks you to do. No other government is as hands-on as local government. We are at the same events, we shop in the same stores, we visit the same doctor's offices, and we use the same services. And we, as a council, can make the decisions today that are enforced tomorrow, unlike our provincial and federal counterparts, who can take weeks to bring about change. During our first year in office, this council did not ask the community to pay extra for their taxes, as we had a zero percent increase that first year, as we all came out of COVID and the difficulties that it imposed. We have a stronger municipal team with staff who work hard for our town and contribute and are proud to be helping us thrive, keep us safe, and showcase a special place to be. I am grateful for all the effort and hard work and time invested that everyone does for the town of High River. Our administration and town staff are some of the finest you will ever have the privilege to know. They are dedicated, and they put the needs of our community into the heart of their actions. We have an enviable first response team, and their collective training and service is one to be proud of and is recognized throughout this province for their excellence. People first starts with our town, and I've seen our team in action in my own engagements with our staff. We've worked hard to advocate for the town with respect to the biodigestors and the difficulties that that has presented despite it being outside of our jurisdiction. We are still at the table and holding the line. High River has amazing and vibrant events-based experiences, from car shows to burnouts, to balloon festivals, from the little britches and Santa Claus parades to Canada Day festivities and events that I am personally proud of, the picnic with a purpose, and the farmers markets. We are home to more than a few vibrant service clubs. Our nonprofit organizations work tirelessly to provide a quality of life for every person in this community. I've enjoyed bringing coffee to council, to the town, as well as interacting with people at every turn. And I'm proud to say that we have hosted at last count, I believe, twenty-seven coffees with council since we started and have had many wonderful connections with folks. With every manner of concern and opportunity to engage has been some of the good stuff. I have my dad to thank for that nudge to get it done. Choosing to leave this role at this time has been a very difficult decision for me. I'm really proud that we are a we, and I say we with deliberation for this council, because it takes mayor and council to make these decisions together. It takes good communication with our administration and collaboration with our town staff to identify issues, prioritize them, and find the best and most cost-effective solutions and then make them happen. It is not an I job, it is a we. To Mayor Snodgrass, Craig, I would like to say that I respect and admire the job you have done for this community. You've seen us from the early days of the flood, through High River's rebuilt, and now we are at a place where we are thriving and growing. Your curiosity serves you well, and your ability to hold firm when needed has been a valued anchor to this team. To the rest of council, I have been honored to work among you, and to be able to trust in our collective wish to do the best for this town has never wavered. We have learned so much, and we, each of us have grown into the role. And as Craig said in the very beginning, every single one of us is here for the right reasons. Our mandate collectively has been to serve this town with an eye on how to spend responsibly, build responsively, create and serve, and make High River the envy of the communities around us. Each of us has had other work hats that we wear in addition to our council work, and I respect this team for how everyone balances their competing commitments with various roles that we all play. It is not easy, and worth noting that it requires effort to achieve. Overall, I'm grateful to have had so many life-enrichening experiences as a member of this council and community. I'm especially proud of Picnic with a Purpose and being part of bringing that to life and the greatitudes as part of another hat I have worn in this community. I want to publicly thank Orvella Small and the team at Inclusion Foothills for the work they do in serving the foothills. She is a pillar in our community, and I've been fortunate to work alongside her these past few years. Today will be my last day as a member of this council, as I am required to provide my notice and be done at the same time according to the MGA. I'm truly sorry to miss the next few months of service to our community as the next election is just around the corner in the fall, and I hope that even though I'm leaving now, the work has been done to position the town for completion of projects and setting up the next council for success in their roles. From my heart, thank you for the love, the learning, the fellowship that I and our family have had here. Since I don't believe in goodbyes, I'm gonna look forward to our return and my next hello. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kelly. It was very well done. And from the, from the fateful day of me asking you to run for council and, when you were working at Co-op, that kind of turned your life around a little bit on a, on a daily basis. But you have absolutely served High River very, very well. You've been an excellent counselor. And, you know, I can't thank you enough for, for putting your hand up and jumping into this, this arena that we have so much entertainment in, in working in, in, in any level of politics nowadays. But they're not easy positions to hold, and you've, you've always handled it, the positive and the negative, very, very well, and you've handled it with class. We've all been very, very proud to sit alongside you as a counselor. I want to give you a special thank you to your coffee with council. Hard pill to swallow at the start there, but you brought me along, and I've quite enjoyed it. It's been good. I haven't been able to attend all of them, no question, but they, it was an, an excellent thing that you, that you started there. And they've always been entertaining. And, and the other piece is, you know, I also want to take, you know, thank women, the boys, because it's not just Kelly that's been involved in this thing. When we all live in these communities, yeah, you're all grinning. Yeah. You've had to eat it, too, right? When, in a, in a small town like this, it's the, I know, our families are all the same way. We're all in the grocery stores, we're all at events, we're all at school, you know. You know, you got, you guys have had to wear this as well. And, and thanks very much for always supporting your wife and your mom. And thanks, Kelly, for everything.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Can't leave it with me, Jesus. They're too emotional. Thanks very much, Kelly. And your resignation is accepted, and we wish you guys all the best in the future. It's really exciting where you're headed. So I'll be there for coffee, whether you like it or not. Don't worry. When Lindsay gets mad and kicks me out of our place, I'm, I know right where I'm going. So don't have to go all the way to the casino anymore. It's a long drive.
It might be an RV parked out.
Yeah, yeah, an RV. Yeah. That's the danger that you've got coming to you, is that RV waking up to seeing that thing in your parking lot in the morning. So, don't knock, don't knock on the door, Wim. And there will be no by-election. Council has talked about this. There will be no by-election. We're within a few months of, of the next election. So that's not in play. So we'll move forward. Congratulations and all the best.
Thank you.
Next one, just a little counselor report. I think we've got a few of them today. I'll go with Brenda's next.
Thank you. So one of the many things that I get to do is join the High River Chamber of Commerce for their monthly meetings. I just want to share a little bit, we've had some changes in the chamber recently. The president of the High River Chamber, Claire Robinson, had to step down suddenly. Natalie is currently, I can't remember her last name, I'm sorry. It starts with a B, but I'm not sure I'll pronounce it right. Anyways, Natalie has graciously, graciously accepted the role to sit in as president until the election. And that's at the AGM on March twenty-sixth. So if anybody thinks they'd like to jump up and be part of the chamber, they're gonna have an election and they need your help. Further to that, I also learned that Yousra Joma is no longer with the High River Chamber of Commerce. I want to say a little bit extra in regards to that. I asked her, can you tell me what your five favorite things were about the twenty-four years that Yousra represented and advocated for every business in High River? Like, this woman gives above and beyond. So she says, wow, reduce my favorite things to five. It's hard, but here we go, and in no order. As twenty-four years, that's approximately eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty days of memories. When I love, I love unconditional and in no order. Some of Yousra's favorite things were the election forum's timer, having to be, getting to be part of the first shovel that was put in the ground for Seasons Retirement Community, the Heartland celebration on Third Avenue. She says, I think it was two thousand and twelve. It was a beautiful day in June. She goes on to describe her other experiences, winning, being the winner of the Accredited Mortgage Broker for the Year. A woman in her industry, she's been incredibly successful. Yousra also makes reference to fondly remembering being a volunteer at Picnic with a Purpose. Thank you, Kelly. The number of calls that different business owners would call struggling- The number of calls that different business owners would call, struggling, sometimes just looking for an ear. One time she received a phone call saying that the food bank was without. Yes, even calls and emails from visitors. Yusra took it upon herself to approach the filming crews of Heartland, asking them to donate to the food bank, and lo and behold, if the shelves weren't filled. Some of the other things that Yusra speaks of, the Guywiddig rodeo, she was able to sponsor the first female wheelbarrow racing event, and there was a beautiful silver belt buckle. I'm not sure about that, but some of you others might have remembered things like that. She goes on to mention the other things, whether it's listening to somebody, participating in the first annual High River Stampede Breakfast, where she sponsored part of an event, being interviewed for Still Standing, where she was referred to by her son-in-law in Slave Lake because they had also done a community project. With that being said, I just want to say thank you. There are not a lot of people that can stay in a volunteer role and be productive for twenty-four years. So thank her to Yusra Joma, and I hope that some of you, if you're hearing, will maybe come forward and want to be part of what Yusra has loved for so long.
Thanks, Brenda. And, you know, Yusra put a ton of work into that organization for obviously twenty-four years, so thanks to Yusra. The last one, of course, it's been hot in the media for the last month or so, but really gained speed on Friday, week ago Friday, I guess, is back into the coal mining on our eastern slopes piece, so I'll update you where that's sitting at. So, you know, Brian Jean, December 20th, made a lot of announcements and, you know, a big yay, hurrah, that, you know, there'll be no new open pit mines, et cetera, which is completely false, but, and then, whatever the date was, recently, a week ago or so, Brian Jean decided to basically shred the ministerial orders that Minister Savage had put in place, which put a halt to all the exploration, et cetera, that these companies were doing on the new lands, but she had put a halt in that because of the public backlash. And they were always temporary measures to stop any of the exploration or development until we had new land use plans and all this, and they had a clear path forward with where this coal mining was going. So he shredded that, shredded those ministerial orders and put a new one in place that basically said, go for it. All those restrictions are out and you guys can do all the exploration and everything else you want, which was obviously extremely concerning that they're kicking the door open on this stuff again, but the major issue that I have right now is the way that the premier with Danielle and Minister of Energy, Brian Jean, are handling this and, you know, using excuses to try to sell this and manipulate Albertans as though this is a good idea. And trust me, I text with both of them. Brian, it's on a daily basis right now with Danielle, it's regularly, not quite daily anymore, but, and the excuses they're giving me and giving Albertans, they're the same thing, but they just don't hold up, and I could go on and on and on today about it, and I won't do it. I was on, I've been on QR77 talking about it. I was on Jespersen for over an hour this morning with Ryan Jespersen and I talking about what's going on. The problem is that, you know, whether it's saying there's no new open pit mines, which is completely false, any style of mining that they are doing is surface mining, it's not, there's no underground mining that's taken place, even though underground mining creates the exact same issues that anything else does, but to say that, and there'll be no new open pit mines, there'll be no, no surface mining allowed, that's completely false, because Grassy Mountain, which is at the heart of this whole thing, that's going to start it all off if it is allowed to begin. Grassy Mountain is, has been claimed by Brian Jean as an old mine, and they're allowed to mine in whatever fashion they wish. Now, the footprint to that mine, you know, the other argument, they say, well, it's a good opportunity to reclaim the old Grassy Mountain site, but the old Grassy Mountain site is two hundred and seventy-four hectares, and the full mine of Grassy Mountain is one thousand two hundred and forty-seven hectares, so you're looking at five times the size. Well, that's not reclamation, that's trying to fix a little hole and digging a bigger hole to try to fix it, like, it just makes no sense. So that, that argument just does not hold up, and then you can go through the other pieces, and the brilliant one right now is this, the, these lawsuits that are in front of them from these coal companies that purchased leases, started exploration, and then the pause was put in place because Jason Kenny and Jason Nixon took the seventy-six coal policy out of play. That's what created the problem, and these guys started to explore, but Sonia Savage, all she did was put back into play the rules that were in play when they first bought the leases. So these coal companies, their lawsuit would not hold up in court at all. They are entitled to, they're claiming sixteen billion dollars. Well, it's a joke, because when Sonia Savage put those rules back into play, they're the exact same rules as what was in play when they made the initial investment, so nothing changed. Would they be entitled to some compensation because of Jason Kenny removing those restrictions and allowing them, removing that policy and allowing them to do exploration for a bit? Sure, that's pennies to the dollar, though, that we, that might be able to be fought out in court, but for Danielle to come now and say, we are removing these restrictions to protect the taxpayers of Alberta, is completely false and fictitious, and it's snake oil to try to convince Albertans that this is, this is a good move and this is a good idea to go down this road, because thinking that the lawsuits were just going to go away was short-lived, because yesterday, Atrum Cole, who was at the heart of these lawsuits, Atrum Cole said, regardless of the new ministerial order, we are still suing the Alberta government. So she's put us in one hell of a mess now, because now it's all, it's all opened up for exploration and we're still being sued. So again, this is something this government has done without thinking it through properly. I've asked Brian, where are you getting your advice from, because it's not, it's not holding up, and, you know, I could go further down the list of excuses that they've come up with, and none of them hold up, and this other piece that Danielle keeps talking about now as well, we need, we need the steel, we need to extract the coal to make the steel to build windmills and solar panels. It's also false, there's other technologies that can be used to and are being used around the world to make steel, and that's through natural gas and using hydrogen for, to produce this material. So for somebody that absolutely, obviously detests renewable energy with solar panels and windmills, because she canceled every project in Alberta, to now be throwing that back in people's face, saying, well, we need this, we've got to do this really bad idea that's going to destroy landscapes and destroy our watersheds, but we've got to do that to make the stuff that I don't want here anyways. Like, I've asked her, just please start to make any of this, make any level of sense at all, and she hasn't been able to do that for me, so. You can listen to the Jespersen interview, of course, it's done in Craig fashion, so I wear my heart on my sleeve when I'm talking about this, because, yeah, it's, I'm the mayor of High River and we're counselors in High River, but we still, we are still Albertans in these, this project, if allowed to go forward at Grassy Mountain, only starts the chain effect that starts to bring these projects north, and then in forty years' time, we are going to be dealing with that, these issues on the Iwood watershed, so that's why it's extremely important now for us as town of High River councillor, councillor, council, to continue to advocate for the end of this coal mining before the disaster actually happens, because it's right in our face. You've just got to drive to the Elk Valley to understand it, it's pretty simple, so. That's where that's at. It's a, it's a deep file and it's an aggressive file right now, and we'll keep going on it. So any questions you have on anything that you hear, please reach out to me if you want some background on it. Of course, I've been working on this for over four years. If I don't have the answer, I've got people that will, so, councillor Kingmore.
Thanks for all your work on this, Mayor Snodgrass. Really appreciate you taking out all the time and effort that you've put into it. In keeping with the tone of beating up the province, we recognize, I got a letter saying the Edmonton Municipal Planning Board is disbanded, and I'm wondering if there's any update with the Calgary Regional Partnership.
Yeah, the EMRB has disbanded since the Alberta government got rid of these two regional boards, so they've disbanded last week, and we will know more of our fate on February 7th is the next board meeting where we'll be discussing this, so I can, I can give you more, more info then, but. Anything else in council reports, questions? See none in board and committee reports? None? Anybody, public comments? Linda? Rick? You're good? Thank you. Councillor Nychuk?
Thanks, Mayor Snodgrass. We had talked a little bit about what's going on west of us, not the biodigester, but in terms of the feedlot. Just wanted to share some information with the public, it's public knowledge through NRCB, but NRCB issued a compliance directive to Rimrock Cattle Company in regards to the myriad of things that High River has been concerned about. So in terms of smell and whatnot, that compliance directive is available on the NRCB's website, but really, really quickly, some of the things they touch on in the report are between May 2019 and November 2024, there were four thousand six hundred and ninety odor complaints. In the seventeen years prior, dating back to January 1st, 2002, there was a hundred and eleven odor complaints. So a significant change from previous operation or observation on smell to what was happening now. They also made reference to the catch basin that Rimrock is using, and I guess, maybe before I go with more detail, I just, I want to be positive in the sense that I recognize that Rimrock has tried to make changes since all this has come about. This report isn't to scathe Rimrock at all. It's NRCB recognizes some things, and NRCB has been working with Rimrock on some of these, and I guess in their determination, they felt that this directive needed to be brought forward to facilitate the changes that are still coming, so I just wanted to give that positive piece that Rimrock, although some people don't think, have been very cooperative, they have been trying. And in the same regard, NRCB has been reviewing this for a number of years now, and some people have thought that NRCB hasn't been doing their job. Everybody's entitled to their opinion, but here we have a compliance directive from them to Rimrock on some of these pieces. So talked about the odor complaints, there's some reference in here too on how they're managing the waste that's produced. There's a catch basin design that NRCB has brought to question, that the surface area is approximately sixty-seven thousand square meters. That's square meters. They recognize that, let me just read this correctly, that the surface area, as far as calculated by NRCB, should be twenty-one thousand square meters, so talking a bit to the point that Mayor Snodgrass, in terms of the biodigester and ponds, are concerned about, this speaks to that a little bit, not that I want to confuse those two issues right now, but the current catch basin appears to be somewhat significantly larger than what that feedlot operation should have. Now, surface area and surface depth are two different things, so perhaps there's a large surface area and there's not depth there, so they might have to mitigate their surface area by making their catch basin a bit deeper, and that should help with smell mitigation. So again, I don't want to go through the whole report, there is, how many pages here? Six pages, and then plus some photographs of the property, but anyway, very positive news coming from NRCB that they've got a construct coming out of all their involvement and answering, I'm going to say, our calls as a community and those that surround High River, and recognizing that there is contribution of odor. Yes, people have brought up that there's odors from other places that happen, but predominantly we have the smell of cows. Rimrock is working on that, but now NRCB is making sure through a compliance directive that some of these things that are recognized, that they're going to go forward with and improve on. So this past summer was better than it has been in previous years, so I'm hoping we can look forward to further improvement, so I wanted to share that with everybody.
Council correspondents for information, correspondents from the Salvation Army, as well as correspondents from the Lomond Community Library. Any other questions before we, before we move on? Michael and I, we are in, just on the biodigester topic, we are in the biodigester hearings all day tomorrow, the legal hearings for our challenges regarding the covering of the storm ponds, as well as the regulatory portion, so Michael and I are involved in that for a solid eight hours on Zoom. Can't wait. Anyways, at this time, I will ask for a motion from councillor Barton at council recess, the regular council meeting on January 27th at 4:05 PM, and move into a closed meeting.
Yeah, I have a motion, Mayor.
All in favor? Carrie?